Okay, sounds good. My packet is not pulling up here. It pulled up earlier and then it left. Okay. Can I, uh, it's error loading. Do you mind pulling this over here? Your, I guess, no, close it to me. Yeah, because I can't. Mine is not loading for some reason. Okay. Oh, you have one. Yeah, my keep getting an error every time I try to pull it up. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the town or the city of Bloomington Township to order. And if could, everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Okay, Madame Clure, could you please call the rule?
Trustee Bolin, here. Trustee Montney, here. Trustee Emig, present. Trustee Becker, here. Trustee Urban, here. Trustee Ward, here. Trustee Crable, here. Trustee Crumpler, here. Trustee Milowambe, here.
Here. Do we need a motion to, okay, so can I have a motion to have trustee Crable participate remotely?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by council member Bolin, and I would say second by council member Ward.
Thank you. I'll just do a roll call real quick. Trustee Bolin? Yes. Trustee Montney?
Yes.
Trustee Emig?
Yes.
Trustee Becker?
Yes.
Trustee Urban?
Yes.
Trustee Ward?
Aye.
Trustee Crumpler?
Yes.
Trustee Milowambe?
Yes. Okay, so trustee Crable, you are authorized to participate remotely. Next item on the agenda, which is a consent agenda. Is there a, is there anybody who would like to remove any items in the consent agenda? Seeing none. Can I have a motion to approve the consent?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay, move by trustee Crumpler, second by trustee Bolin. We are doing a
Yes.
Electronic vote.
Uh, trustee Bolin, Ward, and Crumpler, if you could just refresh, please.
Just came through. Yeah. Trustee Bolin and Emig. Yep. Okay, awesome. The consent agenda passes. Next item on the agenda is just, I guess, a courtesy copy of annual statement and receipts and expenditures for fiscal year 2022, which was presented at the annual town meeting on April 12, 2022. And this is not a, nothing to vote, just informational item, correct? Okay. Any questions from council or trustees? Or comments? From township supervisors, Skirud?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is item number six is approving the project services agreement with the Farnsworth Group to provide professional services for schematic plan and RFP assistance as requested by the township supervisor. Do you have any comments or remarks you'd like to make prior to?
I can make a quick comment.
Sure.
This has been budgeted in line item for special projects to continue with our property condition report deficiencies and maintenance repairs. So this is year one, year two, which was really year three, two and three, I think, because we've been delayed a little.
Okay, are there any questions for trustee, for township supervisor Skirud? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the item?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by trustee Bolin.
Second.
Okay, second by trustee Emig. And if you could vote electronically, please. Trustee Emig? And Bolin. Okay, it looks like everyone has voted and the item passes. No need to announce. Next item is reports by elected officials, and we're going to start with supervisor Skirud.
I just wanted to update you on the parking lot improvements. There, they've poured the concrete on the north side. They'll be striping pretty soon, and then they'll start work on the south side. So it's moving along. We want to continue that movement with the rest of what needs to get done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question for supervisors, Skirud? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to assessors. Scotter?
Hello, I submitted the presentation that I reported on in April for the annual town meeting. And is there any questions on any of the slides I I presented? Otherwise, I can go through the whole report, if you'd like. Do you have copies?
Well, we have them electronically.
It's in the packet, yeah. It's at the end of the package. It's the annual town meeting report, so I just, that's, that's all I had to report on this week.
Okay.
Or this month.
Awesome. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to public comments, but I'm going.
There is no public comment received or registered.
Okay, awesome. So at this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by trustee Bolin, second by trustee Montney. Okay. All those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, awesome. An emphatic aye. Okay, we are adjourned. We will see you in about 10 plus minutes.
Good evening. Just one more time, wanted to repeat, if you'd like to speak at public comment or at the public hearing for QuickTrip, just come forward and you can register here. Thanks.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Okay. Okay, how's everybody doing? Good? Okay, yep. Nod, say I'm doing good. Thank you. Okay, yep, I am doing awesome personally. And for that reason, I'm gonna call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. And if, if everyone could stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Thank you. Madame Clure, could you please call the rule?
Councilmember Bolin?
Here.
Councilmember Montney?
Here.
Councilmember Emig?
Present.
Councilmember Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Urban?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Here.
Mayor Milowambe?
Here. And at this point, we have a councilmember Crable who would like to attend virtually. If I could get a motion from councilmember to allow him. Okay, councilmember Ward, and second by councilmember Bolin.
And if I could just clarify very quickly that he is asking to attend remotely as he's away for other business.
Right. Yes.
All right. Councilmember, oh, you're ready?
Voice vote.
Yeah, it'll be a roll call. Councilmember Bolin?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Urban?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Crable, you're now allowed to participate remotely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item on the agenda is a public comment. And Madame Clure, do we have any public comment?
We do. We received emailed public comment, which was forwarded to council earlier today. That came from Sharon Ramirez and Dennis Wagner. And then we have, let's see, five people present to speak in person, the first one being August Nord.
Okay, sounds good. And I'm gonna go ahead and read a statement in regards to a public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased. Thank you. So I think we have August Nord?
Yes.
Okay. Would you please step forward?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Name is August Nord. Are we ready to go?
Yes, we're ready to go. You have three minutes.
I'm a, my name is August Nord. I'm a precinct committee person for Bloomington Precinct One. And we're obviously talking about the annexation of the land on the west side of H2 Expressway. And a lot of my stuff is based on the original meeting that we had in March that was with the planning committee. And speaker after speaker voiced a position and raised questions during that meeting. We got a lot of, we don't know, we haven't done the research, we'll have to look it up. What's the point of notifying everybody within 500 feet and having meetings if nothing really changed, it didn't affect the vote, nothing changed? The March meeting, we asked about the maintenance cost that the added road will have. The answer was, we haven't done the calculations. Quick Trip will roughly add about a half a mile of road. It can be a hard calculation to do to provide to people, to, so people can feel better about the decisions that are being made. Also, the QuickTrip representative assured us that the road they're building will be maintenance-free for at least 10 years. I haven't seen a road that's maintenance-free for 10 years, especially around truck stops, those roads last couple of years, and then they're horrible afterwards, and the cost will be passed on to the city afterwards. The city cannot be making decisions without research and correct information. The things we asked and we never got the answers to. I'd like to know what the projected revenue will be for the city. How much of that will stay on the west side of the expressway? How much will cost the city long term? And what will happen to the remaining land, especially the bordering land with Bloomington Heights? We're not trying to stop the progress or growth of the city, but the city is not inspiring confidence by passing bills without knowing much about them. I can assure you that QuickTrip has done their research, and they're not coming here to build things for free and give away money. Based on how the city has neglected the west side all the way to the expressway. We fear you'll neglect this too while collecting money that should stay on our side of the expressway. And disturbing our neighborhood in the process. If this decision was left up to the people that live within 500 feet, everybody got this letter a couple of months ago. If they got to vote on this, it will be a hard no. Thank you.
Thank you, August. Next.
Next up, we have Scott Steinling.
Scott, you may step forward. Scott, you may step forward.
Scott Steinling, Ward Five. I do have a concern regarding the infrastructure in this town. The drains are the storm inlets, the roads, the ADA sidewalks. They're around the government center, they're around city hall, but they are not in the individual neighborhoods. The streets, the sidewalks are terrible. I saw one person with a walker. They went out and used the sidewalks before the hatching was done. And he was staying at his son's house, turned around and went back. Tried the roads and they were worse yet, they went back. That speaks real well for the city. You know, where's all this tax money going? Is it going into line some of these pockets? What about the gas tax? I thought it was supposed to go to the roads. If it was, they're doing a lousy job of it. You know, I don't know how many, how much it's gonna take. Maybe it's gonna take somebody falling and killing themselves before the city wakes up. Yet you're supposed to keep the sidewalks clean in front of your house, no problem. But I'll be dag gone if I'm gonna pay $60 or $80 a panel to replace those things when it's the city's problem. The city does a lousy job of keeping the roads up. City's supposed to keep the roads up, it's supposed to raise the storm inlets. I've been still waiting after 15 years. I mean, they keep getting worse. The taxes keep going up and the services keep going down. I wish the city would learn to live within their means. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Next up, we have Patrick Hoben.
Patrick.
Hello, Patrick Hoben with the Bloomington Normal Economic Development Council and I'm also a resident on Bloomington's west side. I want to talk a little about C2E and also QuickTrip. C2E, I believe, is an opportunity. A lot of you know that we're struggling with workforce right now, especially workforce attraction and retention. My mind is an opportunity not just to provide some new homes that are much needed, but also it beautifies a corridor. I travel by there every single day. It is blighted, that's been a chronic problem. We've talked to multiple developers, it's nice to have somebody interested in this. But there is a housing study that I was hopefully gonna have done by now, but some numbers I wanted to talk about to touch on and why we need this. We did meet with our local realtors, there's only nine homes on the market in all of Bloomington Normal under $300,000. So we need something to attract more people because we do have more expansions on the way. And if we don't have the people, we're gonna stop growing. If we stop growing, then we're gonna have more problems. As you know, we do have limited infill development, this is also an infill development. Most of the expansion that we've seen recently, I believe 82% of it's been outside the core. So everything developing on the east side, the east side's beautiful, but we need to put money right back into the heart, which I believe this project does. We also need to have a multifamily product differentiation. If we look at other communities our size that are attracting talent, they have new buildings. Like our properties really haven't been built since the 80s when you comparisons. And I wish I had some photos to share, but they will be in the study when it's finished. And then also, we've seen a major increase, 39% increase when it comes to single-family rentals. They are renting our homes which are meant for our smaller families because we're out of high-end rentals. So if we can get some investment back into the heart, get more rentals in downtown, it'll create walkability, benefit our businesses, but also free up those homes for our families, which they were intended. As far as QuickTrip goes, I know annexation's hard. I've worked for Miss Valleys before. There's a, looking at the overall map of Bloomington, it seems like there's quite a bit of holes all over. I mean, I know annexation can be tough, but this I think is an opportunity to get investment back on the west side because it seems to all be going to the east side. So we get everything back over there. And also, I know it is a truck stop, but QuickTrip does generate outside money. And we love outside money because that is money that's coming in from somewhere else that we can help fix our roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Next.
Next up, we have Lily and Britten. Okay, then last, we'll have Vicky Schultz.
Okay, Vicky.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Vicky Schultz. And I want to address the roads. May 1st, 2019, local motor fuel tax was increased four cents, up from four cents to eight cents. The media reported that this increase was gonna go to a road repair and I imagine probably sidewalks too. The roads are in dire need and so are the sidewalks, they're in horrible shape. And I just wanted to say that I don't remember exactly when this was, when they, when construction, I don't know who does the road repairs, but they had Main Street worked on and they paved it brand new, put down new pavement. And then for some odd reason, they went back and dug up the water, water holes, the water drainage in the roads after they had already repaired them. So I don't know, you know, there's a lot of issues going on with the construction of the roads and the waste of money probably that's, I mean, that was probably a waste of money because what it does is it ruins the roads quicker. When they come back and dig back up what they already fixed, it, you know, the roads get bad quicker. And so I don't know if there's a different way that they can do the roads so they're, you know, not damaged sooner, you know, that they last longer. And the other thing I had was that I know that Secretary of Transportation Buttigieg was here recently. And you know, I think it's, it's embarrassing to see, you know, if we want to draw people into our city, we need to do that infrastructure to at least make it look nicer. And it also, you know, who wants to drive on these roads? I mean, it does damage to our cars, it's not good for our cars. People who are lower income can't really afford it, you know, the because it's just, it's atrocious. So I hope you all think about that and start considering because the county doesn't pay for city roads. The city council, the city pays for city roads and sidewalks. And we need safe sidewalks for people to walk on. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. Is that everybody?
Yes, that's all we had for public comment.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is recognition and appointments. And we're gonna start with a proclamation for Arbor Day. And as I understand, we have a staff member. Two staff members come up. Hello?
Mr. Mayor.
This is an official proclamation in, I guess, in recognition of Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution for combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products, products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I welcome Alawwe, mayor of the city of Bloomington, Illinois, do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2022, as Arbor Day in the city of Bloomington. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden their heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Thank you very much. My heart is very much gladden. And would you like to say a few words? I know we were doing a planting ceremony on the 29th.
Yeah, we're doing a planting at Trinity Lutheran School at Hamilton Road in Bloomington at 1:30 on Friday, the 29th. So everybody here is welcome to come to that. And this is really, you know, I'm here getting this, but this is a community award. It reflects on all of administration, all the staff at the city and all of our residents that care about trees. Bloomington staff and residents are always very proud of their trees, so I accept this on behalf of the whole community and the citizens.
Thank you very much. How about a hand for our staff to do a fantastic job planting trees? Awesome. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is recognition of boards and commission appointment as requested by administration department. I think we have a couple of slides.
I'm not sure that we have a slide. It's Gina LaVaza with the Citizens Beautification. Oh, we do got it. You're on it. Thank you. And I'm not sure if Gina is present or not.
No, I think she's probably out there planting trees.
She might be, so congratulations.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a recognition of and presentation of the McLean County 2021 4H Robotics Power Surge Blast Team who won the Champions Award in a state competition as requested by the administration department. So if you guys want to move forward so we can hear your presentation, this is awesome. And I know there's a couple of, one in particular, I'm not gonna put him on blast, but you know, who wanted to have some of those hats? For all of us. So if you want to move forward? Yes, absolutely. So a couple of weeks ago, I had an opportunity to meet with these young people and they shared with the, their project. And I thought along with the staff that this would be, it's a great opportunity when young people who are the future of our community do things like this. I think it's important to highlight those. And it's a little bit different from what we typically do at city council meetings, so we're really looking forward to it.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for the opportunity for these kids. I would just introduce the kid's name and let them start the presentation.
Sure.
This is Vikyat Chatrati, Sandy Bhagavatla, Vishu Devari, Sakid Bhujnam. Drew, raise your hands when I speak. Drew Ravinutla, Ayana Gupta, Grant Rizer, and Grayson Tom. Thank you.
There you go.
If we could, sorry to interrupt. I can actually just give you guys this mic, that might be helpful to you.
Oh, back, back one slide. Yep, this one? Okay, awesome.
First Lego League is a robotics program designed for students in fourth through eighth grade. It was organized by FIRST. FIRST is an international organization with over 35,000 registered teams.
In just Illinois, there are 358 FIRST teams, of which three are in the Bloomington Normal area. 4H is an alliance partner with FIRST and that is why our team Power Surge Blast is a FIRST robotics team and a FIRST robotics spin club. There are four components to the FL challenge that is core values, which is team culture, robot design, innovation project, and the robot game. Next.
Our game theme was Cargo Connect and it was sponsored by Amazon. We focused on the transportation industry.
The challenger's. The challenge was released in late August and the game is two and a half minutes and the goal is to achieve as many points as possible.
The regional competition is held in December and teams in advance go to the state competition in January. Our team won the robot design awards at the regional competition and we got second place. We got second place, which was the champion award finalist at the state competition out of 31 teams.
Here's a picture of our game board. We analyze 16 missions for difficulty level and points earned. Our attempted high score is 375 points and here's a grouping of four of our missions.
After analyzing the missions, we identified some components we wish to have on our robot, those of which being two drive motors, two attachment motors, one of which is side to side, the other up and down, two sensors, one of which being one color sensor and an internal gyro sensor.
Our favorite feature on the AskBot was conveyor belt system. It had a vertical motion and easy on and off attachment and it was used for a critical mission.
We also made attachments for specific, more specific functions. Our big goals were being able to be reused and the easy on and off attachment.
We use spike programming skills and we used the goals for the robot movement were accuracy, efficiency, and repeatability.
Our most significant problems we encountered were alignment errors, inaccurate moves, and movement issues.
This is our testing strategy. We use attachment prototype testing to make sure our attachments work as planned. We also use the 10-run rule, which states that a task must work eight out of 10 times to be deemed successful. We also used integration testing to prepare for our competition.
Our team was composed of two experienced, two developing, and four new members. We used peer mentoring to partner our experience with our newer members to transfer knowledge.
The skill, the skills we learned are how to analyze missions and assign priorities, robot design and building skills, problem resolution skills, and others.
Even though of COVID restrictions, we were still able to give back to our community by assisting a younger team. And we held a 4H fair booth and we demonstrated to more 4H clubs. Aska! Are there any questions? I start, yeah. Power Surge. Aska Transport.
We interviewed several experts based on potential topics, including NOSM Transportation, Boppy, Tine of Normal, and others.
We then analyzed our problem statement, which was truck driver shortages. We researched that there's a shortage of 80,000 truck drivers. 70%, 70% of all cargo transportation is by trucks and is a critical player in the supply chain. The truck driver shortage community impact includes the shortage of products, slower deliveries, the inflation of prices, and many other things. For example, as you can see, the prices of food have skyrocketed in 2021.
Here are some potential solutions to our problem. We decided to go with more efficient rail-to-truck transfer.
We then iterated our problem statement and found the inefficiencies with the rail-to-truck transfer process. We resaw that the truck driver may wait for two or more hours and truck drivers are paid by the load. Therefore, waiting registers is paid and there are only 36 sightings in Illinois which create bottlenecks. As they say.
The current steps for rail-to-truck transfer start with the train stopping at a train sighting and a crane unloading all the cargo. The current steps for rail to truck transfer start with the train stopping at a train siding and a crane unloading all the cargo from the train. The crane then lowers the cargo onto a container chassis. The truck then leaves to head to delivery site and may or may not come back for a second load. And this takes too much time.
Our goal is to develop a more efficient rail to destination process. Our proposed solution should be efficient, reduce of cost, safe, eco-friendly, and provide tracking information.
This is a high level view of our project. As you can see, the train would pull into the siding as usual. It would then wait in this small area for the Aska car to complete its journey. The Aska car would use powered drills until it reached the road where hydraulics would swap out its road wheels with the street wheels. It would then use its electric battery pack and GPS to dive to the warehouse where workers inside would unload it and send it back on its way to the Aska, or the train.
Here are some of the features on our Aska car. We have a modular cargo container, rail wheels, street wheels, hydraulics to switch them out, two aerodynamic shields, and an electric battery pack in one of them. When reviewing some autonomous features we wanted, here are some we came up with. Motion sensors, cameras, a GPS system, and a computer hardware. Here you can see where we mapped and placed all of our components on the Aska car. Then we totaled up the price of all of the items, eventually totaling to $75,250.
Our solution addresses the truck driver shortages so that there is efficient delivery so that goods are more available, which reduces the product costs and means increased customer satisfaction.
We interviewed several experts such as an IIC professor of marketing, Boppy, Tine of Normal, Google, and Cisco Systems.
Some of the skills we developed while working on our innovation project included interviewing, collaborating, estimating costs, and others. Are there any questions?
Questions, Council? Okay, Councilmember Ward?
I always have questions. I'm curious about what, um, what you think was the biggest challenge you had to overcome.
There were a lot of good ones, such like in Sandyside, like Tesla bots and and other things. And we had to see the pros and cons and the rail to truck transfer process had not that many cons as to something like Tesla bot.
I would have to agree with Vic. Like, um, the team brainstormed like many solutions, like we searched up on Google, like, like the new products Tesla's coming out with, like, we saw like electric auto driving, like flatbeds and like other semi trucks and stuff. So we were looking at those, but they had more cons than pros. So we looked at more efficient rail to truck transfer process.
Does anyone else have something to add?
Other question? Councilmember Eme?
Um, thank you for your present, oop. No, I'm done. Thank you for your presentation and your, your hard work. I love the, the emphasis on team culture. So thanks for describing what you gained and not just what you created. My question is simply, what surprised you the most? And I'll hear from any one or two of you.
I think like just in general, a lot of stuff mainly about the robot, to be honest, was really surprising, like the fact that you can take a gear and turning into a conveyor belt. That was really surprising and also really helped our robot.
I would say the various way we learned about like robotics, because like before I didn't know how like self-driving cars or trucks worked. But after working on this project, I learned a lot about it and it was really interesting.
Awesome. Other questions? Oh, Councilmember Bull?
Yeah, I don't have really any questions other than it appears this is going to be a, like an automatic delivery system. Well, that's kind of cool. What I appreciate the most, looking at you all up here, is all the collaboration put into this project. Because the more hands, the more hats, the better the solution. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Oh, Councilmember Urban?
Yes, thank you. Wow, what an, what an incredible group of young men and women that are standing in front of me right now. And I cannot tell you how incredibly proud I am for you to be bold and come here and do this presentation and show us that you not only have excelled, but you've clearly won this amazing award and you've gone above and beyond. And I am incredibly proud of you and just extremely thankful for you. So my question is, how many of you have already made the decision that you're going to take this incredible gift that you have and step into community and government leadership? Because there's a lot of people in here that we're getting older and you guys are going to need to replace us. So how many of you are now thinking, I want to be on council, I want to run for office, I want to work for the government? Because you are extremely gifted and thank you for everything.
There is a two-minute video that we are going to request to play for the, whatever the kids played the robo that ran in the state tournament, we recorded a video of that. So if we can quickly play the two-minute video, you guys can see the actual state tournament if you can please let us do so. Thank you.
Awesome. That, that was fantastic. It really makes me wonder what I was doing at that age, you know? I don't remember doing things that were so, so amazing and definitely, I think the future is bright for all of you. Like I said to you in, in our meeting earlier, you know, ISU is putting together the School of Engineering and I, I wouldn't be surprised to see some of you there. And actually, some of us were saying, you know, maybe Shark Tank too. So that'd be awesome. Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you very much. So we're gonna move to the next step, the next item in our agenda, which is the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any member of the council would like to have removed? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Ward and second by Councilmember Bowlin. If you could go ahead and vote. I think we're missing Councilmember Crumpler. Sounds good. Okay, the consent agenda passes. There are no nays to announce. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on a proposed annexation agreement with QuickTrip Corporation for land located west of I-55 and south of West Market Street in McLean County, Illinois, consisting of 80 acres, more or less, as requested by the Economic and Community Development Department. And this item is just a public hearing. It's just a presentation, public testimony, so no vote will be taken at this time. I am going to go ahead and call the public hearing to order at 6:40 PM and turn it over to City Manager Gleason for some introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm actually going to turn it straight over to Assistant Economic Community Development Director Kimberly Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So what's before us is a series of cases, starting with the public hearing. It's something we are very excited about. We have worked for a long time with QuickTrip Corporation to make this happen. There is a piece of property slightly over 80 acres, it's about 88 acres, that would, the proposal is to annex this. The first is this public hearing for the agreement itself. The, as part of the agreement, the first 15 acres that are closest to West Market Street would be proposed to be a B1 zoning. The remaining 65 acres or so would be remaining as agriculture with no immediate plans to develop. The annexation would allow a fueling center, about 82,000, excuse me, 8292 square foot convenience center would be along with that. Fits with our comp plan. It's tier two development, land use priority. It's land that is immediately adjacent to the city's incorporated area with access to all city services. It's also designated as a commercial activity center. And then the part that, that would remain agriculture, closest to the, where there's residential to the south, is designated for new neighborhood. But the agreement indicates future obligations, which include plating and infrastructure improvements that include the extension of Wiley Drive, JC Parkway, improvements to Bloomington Heights roads, along with new sidewalks, multipurpose path, signal modernization is part of this. Related improvements to allow pedestrians to safely cross Market Street at both Wiley and JC Parkway. Also included our extension of water and sewer veins for each lot. On March 2nd, the Planning Commission voted six to one to approve, recommend approval of this. So now a public hearing is required before the city council. And again, separate cases follow. The QuickTrip Corporation is here and also has a presentation for you.
Thank you. And I believe there's a is it Kim? No, not, I'm sorry, not you. I'm talking about the QuickTrip representative. If they could come forward.
Gwen Keen and John Pratt.
Gwen. So you're gonna provide a project, project overview?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is John Pratt. Thank you for hearing us today. I'm a longtime resident of the city of Bloomington, an attorney here, and I'm QuickTrip's local council. I want to echo what Kim said earlier today. We've spent many, many hours working with staff on this project over the last year. And we couldn't be more grateful for all the work that staff has done. We've met with lawyers, engineers, traffic coordinators, and Illinois Department of Transportation. It's been a lot of work to get to this point to present to you today. And so I appreciate the staff's work on this project. I also want to thank the Planning Commission. We had two hearings before the Planning Commission. We won six to one on the annexation agreement in the first hearing and a unanimous approval of our site plan on the last hearing. QuickTrip is fully invested in this project. It has purchased the land. This is not a contingent project. They purchased the land. QuickTrip is here already. And it's ready to start with this project right away. As Kim said, it's over an 80-acre project. We had to buy all the land from the seller to get the site that we wanted. So we did. And we want to bring all the land in today. We don't want to do it piecemeal. We want to bring the whole 80 and make it part of this city today. A major part of the 80 acres is going to be, remain agricultural. It's going to remain exactly the way it is until there'll be future planning meetings, future work with the staff, and will be before the Planning Commission and the council if that, if that farmland is developed. But right now, we're concentrating on developing along Market Street, which everyone here knows that Market Street is very developed already. And this QuickTrip Travel Center will fit in very nicely with what's already there along Market Street. As, as Kim mentioned, the, the Travel Center and our development fits with the comprehensive plan. We are improving streets. We're gonna improve Bloomington Heights Road. We're gonna improve Wiley Drive. We are adding streets. We're adding Keen Crossing. We're also adding JC Parkway, an extension on JC Parkway. We are improving those two intersections. We're making them pedestrian-friendly, adding sidewalks, new stop signs and that and like. We are going to be adding sidewalks that don't exist now along Bloomington Heights Road, along Market Street. Those things don't exist now. And we're going to be adding those. All that's going to be done at QuickTrip's expense. Not, not the city's expense, at QuickTrip's expense. We're also adding a sewer. We're running the sewer all the way from Constitution Trail all the way up to Market Street. Again, that's going to be at QuickTrip's expense, not at the city's expense, at QuickTrip's expense. And that city sewer will service Market Street, our development, but also developments next to us. And perhaps even the neighborhoods if they can, if they wish to tap on. So QuickTrip is investing in our city. And all this will help bring employment opportunities, sales of goods and services along Market Street to our citizens, but also to people that are traveling to and from the city of Bloomington, also people that are just traveling through the area. Obviously, that's going to keep, increase revenue for our city and property taxing dollars for the city of Bloomington and for the and for the other taxing bodies such as Unified. So we're very excited about this project. We appreciate all the help we've got from the staff to get to this point. And I'm gonna turn it over to Gwen Keane, who's the real estate project manager with QuickTrip, to introduce QuickTrip.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to City Clerk for...
Thank you, if I could, thank you for that project update, Mr. Pratt. Ma'am, if I could have you raise your right hand, I'll just swear you in.
Name or me or both?
You, if you don't mind, thank you. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So my name is Gwen Keane, I'm with QuickTrip. In July, I will celebrate 20 years with QuickTrip. So it's a fantastic company to work for, and it's a fantastic company to represent. I do have a presentation to kind of introduce you to who QuickTrip is, what our culture is, how we operate. So you can kind of become more familiar with us coming into your community. And then I'll be happy to answer any questions I can. So if we can start the PowerPoint. So about 15 years or so ago, we used to only have a, we stayed pretty true to a certain design, and we lovingly called it the shoebox. And so about 15 years ago, we really started looking at where we wanted to go as a company and get out of the shoebox, so to speak, and develop our stores. So we called it a Gen 3 store. Well, through that, we found the opportunity where we used to go into a city like St. Louis and saturate the market and go to what we call critical mass and have a concentration of stores. We feel that we can now take our brand nationwide or regionally. And we're very, very protective about our branding and how we operate. And we need to make sure that we can maintain the culture that we have of excellence in these stores. And we believe with our security systems and being able to communicate that culture that we can do that. And Bloomington is a perfect location for us to do that. So this is what we call our Gen 3 store. Doesn't mean a lot to you, but we basically developed it with circulation in mind. We have a building separated more so from the traffic of the canopy. We have side doors, we have front doors. We have dedicated delivery spots in the back. And also, you can see that there's no curbing. It's only, the store is protected by ballards. Next slide, please. And as I mentioned, QuickTrip's branding is one of excellence. And the C-store industry, QuickTrip is typically in the number one, number two, or number three spot. We usually swap in and out with companies like Wawa and Sheets nationwide. Market Source surveys tell us that, a lot of other nationwide surveys tell us that. But we are number one out of 45 nationwide chains. And the concentration of where we ranked the highest is cleanliness, friendliness, great service, merchandise, merchandise price, and the atmosphere we create. We are a privately-held company. You are not getting a franchise. This store will be privately-held by QuickTrip and is operated out of the Tulsa corporate offices there. And then we also have some regional offices. So we don't have any franchises. Next slide, please. And again, we are a brand of excellence. We are on numerous lists, one of which is the best companies to work for. We're also top privately-held companies. And we're also on People's Magazine's Companies That Care. And I was trying to find, I had something that I had grabbed here real quick. Cause I had a recent update. In 2001, we also appeared on other lists, which were America's privately-held companies. But we're also a best employees for veterans, best employees for diversity, and America's best employees by state, which was Oklahoma. But we also were recognized as one of the top 100 brands consumers love. And for a gas station, so to speak, we count ourselves very prideful to take that, to be on a list like that, that it's a recognized brand that people love. Not just like, or hey, I have to go to, but they love. Next slide, please. So this is our store, this is typically how our canopy looks. Next slide. This is the internal, we've done some changes internally. But one of the things that provoked this new design was our QuickTrip kitchens. So what we like to do is not only have that grab-and-go food, but we prepare fresh food onsite, and we call it the kitchens. So we're kind of not just a convenience store. We offer a lot of fresh-made foods, and ladies, that's what we like to see. We don't always like to go grab it off the shelf. We like to know that it was made fresh right there. And so that's what we've developed, because we're trying to reach all of our base of consumers. The kitchens will have pizza, pretzels, barbecue sandwiches, tacos. We have frozen novelty drinks. We have frozen novelties like ice cream. We have various ideas and freshly-made subs out of the kitchens as well. Next slide, please. We like to call it snackle, because sometimes a piece of pizza can be a snack, and sometimes it's your dinner. And so that's kind of what we've developed, is what we call the snackle. It can fall in either category, just depending on what you want at the time. Next slide. That's our extensive tea offering. We also have different flavors of lemonades, coffees, cappuccinos, as well as frozen chocolate drinks as well, or cappuccinos. Next slide. But this is our, our tech stand. And one of the things that we developed, when we developed our multimillion-dollar security system, we were able to take our employees and let them face inside the store for better monitoring, because now we have the entire property with security cameras where they can monitor it inside the store through monitors, as well as be more present within the store. So we, that was a change for us that we made, that's working out very well for the stores. Next slide. So QuickTrip employees, so we provide top pay for top people. Our average assistant manager entry level is now actually a little bit higher, around $40,000 a year. And starting pay for parking purchase has actually gone up to $11 per hour. So we do provide bonuses. We have health benefits available to both full and part-time employees. We have full-time employee profit sharing and 401Ks, tuition reimbursement. We have an under 10% turnover rate within the industry. And in the history of QuickTrip, no employee has ever been laid off. Next slide. So what does our community have impact here? Well, there'll be new jobs. I'm gonna be very forthcoming. Because we want our culture here and developed at the store, we will bring in an experienced, top managerial team. So the store manager and the assistants will actually be brought in so we can then communicate and teach our culture at this store to maintain the brand of excellence. However, we'll have other full-time and part-time employees that we'll need to hire from the community. And then as they understand our culture and are able to take over the store, we can move that experienced team someplace else. And now we have a fully experienced culture, QuickTrip culture team here in the Bloomington area. So we also contribute 5% of our profits to local community and charitable organizations. We also are a national safe place location for endangered youth. This is a program that at shelters and schools, childrens are taught that if you need help, or if a woman is being battered or needs assistance, if you need help, you look for the sign of the national safe place, and there you can go and get assistance. And we make sure that our employees are trained on how to take care of that person, how to protect that person, what different agencies or authorities need to be contacted in order that person can stay safe until the right assistance can come and be with them. Next slide. So now let's get to the real stuff, the truck stop. You know, that's the thing that everyone's concerned about. Do we really want a truck stop? We actually very purposely call this a travel center, because we can kind of consider ourselves the anti-truck stop. We don't have a lot of the amenities that a typical truck stop would have. We have recognized, and one of the reasons why we are growing in this area, is that we see that short hauling is on the rise. The days of people going New York to LA and all over the country for weeks on end are really coming to an end. You have more people that want to spend time with their family. And so a lot of those routes are broken down into more short-term hauling. So you have those folks that want to go St. Louis to Chicago or Indianapolis to Kansas City, and they don't need a lot of the amenities. And they really don't want to be part of a parking lot that has 100-plus truck parking spots. So we don't provide showers, we don't have a lounge, there's no indoor seating. We don't sell any pornography or adult-type magazines. We don't cater to the National Fleet accounts. Typically, if you're under a National Fleet account, you have to go where they tell you to go in order to get all of those benefits and rewards. We don't do that. We have a limited number of fueling bays and a limited number of truck parking in order that we are the smaller pond for the folks that really just want to come in, get their fuel, maybe go get a snackle, pizza, maybe do a little bit of paperwork and be on their way. Typically, they don't park. That's why we have very limited parking at this location. Next slide. So what is our guarantee? We guarantee quality and excellence in everything that we do. And that's something that we take very seriously. And again, I work for a great company. I'm very proud of the product that we have and that we can bring to your community. And I'm happy to answer any questions that I might be able to. In the next slides, I do have the site plan. I also have a sign plan. I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that some of the feedback from the Plan Commission meetings were the concern about overnight or long-term parking. We have, and if you want to go to the, not, oh, those are other pictures. We can pass this. That's an aerial of the one in Waco that we just opened a few months ago. One more? Two more? One more? There we go. So on that site plan, which we call it the signage plan, you'll see that we have called out that at each of the truck entrances, there'll be a sign that says, "No long-term parking." We don't want someone showing up at 8 o'clock in the morning and not leaving until 8 o'clock at night. We don't want them showing up at 8 o'clock in the evening and not leaving until 8 o'clock in the morning. We feel the best way to communicate that is to say, "No long-term parking." And we've put that sign at each of those truck entrances. We'll also reference the ordinance in which we're approved under so that they understand this isn't just something that we're saying, but the city as a whole does not want. The next slide is a copy of our landscape plan. At the last Planning Commission meeting, we were asked about putting evergreens along there. The concerns have been noise, screening. One thing, the trucks will back in, so the lights on the trucks will not cast in the, in the direction of the residential area. The other thing, though, is we did go on, and not only did we put 10 evergreen trees, we put 25. So we added an extensive row, so it looked appropriate. It's aesthetically nice. And we've honored what was requested of us, which was to try to provide a little more screening, a little more noise absorption. Couple other things, we are having the field. This, this summer is going to have another crop. Couldn't think of the word crop. We are gonna have a crop. We think that with the openness of that area, that we will be able to, that will help with some of the issues that were brought forward. So that is going to be farmed this summer. And we also have a church group that is helping us with the trash. We think by having the crop, that'll help, help with trash as well. So I hope I've asked, answered some of the questions that you might have already had. But if you have more, I'm happy to answer them the best of my ability.
Thank you very much, both John and Gwen. And we, at this point, we're going to take public input. Do we have anybody signed up?
We do, we have three people here to testify. The first is Shannon Ramirez.
Okay, Shannon.
Shannon, if I can just swear you in, if you'll raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
You may go forward.
I sent you guys an email. I'm a little emotional, because I'm thankful that you put the trees up. I asked for 10 trees to shield our neighbors from the light. I don't think the west side needs another convenience store or fueling station. I sent you a letter, I hope you guys read it. I believe what the city of Bloomington needs is more residential homes. On Market Street, you have six fueling stations, three of which provides fuel for trucks in overnight stays. I understand that QuickTrip is helping the city by providing infrastructure that they've always wanted and property to gain, you know, by annexation. And I understand it's gonna bring money with the fuel and possibly whatever else that they offer at the store. But our community needs more homes, not more fueling stations. I've been fighting pretty hard to make sure that our neighborhood is shielded from the sight of the traffic, the trucks coming in. Yes, the evergreens will help, but there's part of that area that on Burt Street and Washburn, there is no shelter, no shield from what's gonna be coming in off of Wiley and Keane. Yes, they have lights for the bays that shine down, and the lights are not shining out, but truck lights shine out. And trucks that back up, they're going to be beeping. And, and that's the backup alarm. And so I'm just, I'm not for the gas station. I don't think we need it. My neighborhood doesn't think we need it. But I know that you guys want to build up the community. I just think a better way of utilizing that space would be putting homes. The guy not too long ago said, "We only have nine houses on the market." Rivian's bringing in so many new, new employees and people. QuickTrip offers new jobs. Hell, we're struggling so damn hard to fill in the, the jobs that we have. We don't need more jobs for more people to not fill. We need homes. Just, I tried to express this to the Planning Commission, but the site is on money. The site is on the fuel tax and the infrastructure of, of, of free streets. You guys are, and that's just part of the QuickTrip proposal. Hell yeah, the city wants to jump on board, because you're, they're giving you guys a lot of things for you to, to bring them in. I'm gonna give you two streets, and then we're gonna replace this part of the street, and we're gonna add sidewalks, and then we're gonna add sewers. Yeah, that's a big selling point, but is that, those are part of the things that we need, but we really need residential homes. And I'm just asking that, whatever you guys decide to do, consider it as if it was your backyard, your side yard. It's looking out your window, those lights coming in your bedroom windows, your kids. And when they build up that area, the, to merge the residential with commercial, because they say, you know, I'm gonna leave it, and we're gonna leave it agriculture. Okay, well, how are you gonna merge those two? You're gonna put mixed, you're gonna put a, let's say, mixed residential housing. Okay, that's the only way they can merge that. With that in mind, how many of you, our parents, are gonna want to put your, to raise your family next to a truck stop? I know if I had kids, I wouldn't want to be living next to a truck stop. Like, how am I gonna protect them? Yes, they have cameras and all this amazing security. But I just think we could do better at planning. We could do better for the city of Bloomington by providing housing versus more fueling stations. There's six right there on Market Street. Point four, point two, point five, point seven, and point nine miles away. I mean, these are footsteps away. I just ask that, Gwen, it's time for you to vote. Consider it, your backyard, okay? Thanks.
Thank you. Next?
Next, we have John Lehman.
As a quick reminder, I probably should've said that earlier, but if you could try to limit your comments to five minutes or less. Previous speaker was under five minutes, which was great, but I, I needed to say that. Thank you.
John, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's John Lehman, and I live on Washburn Street. So that would be out my back door. My back door. I just have some concern right now. I have a, a large amount of trash that goes into my yard all the time with nothing built there and all that. And then I have with the noise and the light pollution. I do have some concerns with that and runoff and the effect on the wildlife we have in the neighborhood. Those are just some of my concerns I have with this. So that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you, John.
And next, last up, we have Denise Balagna. Thank you. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for hearing us. QuickTrip has told us that they, they do not encourage overnight parking, but also cannot promise that it won't happen. We've reached out to the TA Travel Center down the road and asked their employees about their parking. Employees said most nights, there is plenty of parking spaces available. Despite one hundred and sixty-five overnight parking spaces available at TA Travel Center and ninety-five overnight parking spaces at Pilot Travel Center, semi-trucks are often parked with engines on and humming on Caroline Street next to the pilot and also at Walmart. When asked about the parking situation, and a pilot employee said, "Police, police leave the truckers alone as long as they're not blocking traffic." Well, if the police aren't enforcing, enforcing no parking on Caroline Street, how can our neighborhood be protected from semi-trucks parked with engines on along J.C. Parkway and Keane Street additions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other public comment?
There is no further public testimony.
Testimony. Thank you. Okay, so, like I said, at this point, I am going to close the public hearing. Oh, sorry, not yet. We do have questions? Counsel, okay, sure, Councilwoman Montney.
So I have questions for Ms. Keane, if that's all right. Yes. Thank you. I'm sure it's humbling, you know, to hear the comments. I, I know you've, I've read about you, you, you must travel a ton yourself.
I do.
You know, you do. So thank you for sharing your story. How many locations does QuickTrip currently have?
We, we are almost at the nine-hundred mark. We've opened up, what, this is what we call the remote store network, because again, we're not concentrated in an area. We have opened approximately ten of those, and they have done wonderfully. They've been very well received. We're very happy that our culture is being maintained in those locations.
So I've read a lot about your company culture, actually. I mean, it's a very large privately-held company. And certainly, the affirmation by your associates and how they respond to surveys is very consistent with that. Out of those nine-hundred locations, as of today, how many of those locations have video gambling terminals in them?
None of them.
So I didn't think so. And it's confusing to me because we actually passed an ordinance, which I voted against, to amend our code to add video gambling so that this QuickTrip location agreement could be made. It seems highly inconsistent with your company's culture to come and present about an investment in a community. And, you know, statistically, in Bloomington, just since March of last year, three hundred and twenty-four million dollars have been played in video gaming terminals in our community with a net loss to people of twenty-seven million dollars. And I'm trying to understand, with this being an eleven-billion-dollar company with very successful storefronts all over, why it is that at this location in Bloomington, you have asked for an exception, which will encourage truckers to stay? I've been reading about the impact of these video gaming truck stops in the trucking industry. And I believe it creates an incredibly unhealthy situation from a gambling addiction perspective. And then lastly, just to share, based on neighbors and their concerns about lights and traffic and things of crime, one of our five homicides in Bloomington in the year 2021 was directly following someone out from a video gaming terminal win.
I'm grinning because I've worked for QuickTrip for twenty years. And before I held the position that I held now, I spent ten years in legal handling claims. So when I heard we were doing this, I, I have to say, at first, I thought, "Are we crazy?" And so because of that branding, I personally was concerned. What does this do to a QuickTrip branding, just as you've done your investigation as well? Well, I had to go to school, so to speak, about this whole aspect of video gaming. Now, first of all, the reason why we don't have it is because we are trying it in Illinois. Illinois' trucking industry, their travel centers, all of these stops, including C-stores, that are not catering to a travel center or travelers are-
I'm not hearing any audio.
Test? Oh, no, I don't mind. Can you hear me now? So what we're finding is, I had to learn about this as well. And the appeal in a C-store or a travel center is not who you would typically think it would be. I think of it as, it's my mom. My mom is seventy-two years old. She does not want to go to a bar. She does not want to go to a casino because it's too overwhelming. But would she want to go to QuickTrip, maybe after she's fueled or got a pizza, and maybe spend twenty minutes? Gaming is an entertainment industry that is becoming more and more commonplace and mainstream in our culture today. It didn't used to be that way. We all have these connotations of what it does and who it appeals to. But we also find that it appeals to people who don't want to be in a bar-type of situation, who have alcohol additions and other issues, but they still want to entertain by gaming. So it has fallen along the same lines as what we consider other things, such as alcohol or other type of things that we call the quote-unquote sin city. The, the sin taxes sometimes is what it's referred to. But I understand it is disconcerting. It's a different type of, of thought when it comes to these type of gaming systems, to be in these facilities. But we're finding out, and the demographics are showing, that these are the people who are, who lean towards wanting to go to those. The other issue as to why we want it, one, we, we have been working through the process of getting the licensing and what, what is necessary in Illinois in order to establish gaming. It's taken us longer than we anticipated. We also recognize that if we are going to be competitive in this market, and especially in the state of Illinois, then we have to consider gaming. The Pilot, the Freedom, and the TA all have gaming at those locations. If we don't provide a certain level of that, which is expected and anticipated with the services that we have, then we are then at a competitive disadvantage.
So it sounds like, in the, in the planning commission meeting, your testimony was, you want people to come in, get fuel, grab food, and be on their way. Your testimony also differentiated yourself as not a truck stop.
Correct.
And yet now, you're putting yourself in the category of those truck stops in this discussion.
So the definition of the truck stop, under your code, we would probably fall under that. Under different sections of your code, we might fall under something else. It's all how it's defined at the time. We like to differentiate ourselves by calling it a travel center because we don't provide the amenities that typical truckers who want to stay long-term will want at a facility. That doesn't mean that someone doesn't want to sit for ten minutes or twenty bucks' worth of entertaining themselves. Video gaming is not entertaining to me. I went to Vegas and didn't put one quarter in a slot, but I went up in the Paris Eiffel Tower. Entertainment is different to, to the person. And there is a large section of our community these days, in mainstream America now, that considers gaming entertainment. And so, no, I don't want someone sitting in that room for hours on end. But if someone wants to go in there, like my grandma or my mom, and spend twenty bucks while my grandpa's, you know, fueling up the car, then I would rather her do it at a QuickTrip than go into the casino or going to a bar and doing it.
So do you have locations in Louisiana?
We do.
Do those locations have video gaming terminals?
We are still working through that process of getting the gaming. These remote stores are built in order that those can be installed once we get the proper approvals and what needs to happen through the state. One thing that I, I want to make sure that I communicate today is, we're making a multimillion-dollar, long-term investment. We don't go into a, a community such as Bloomington or any city that we go into kind of haphazard. We spent a year working with your staff. We spent far much, a lot more time before that doing an analysis on whether or not we feel that we can maintain a long-term presence here in Bloomington. We know that maybe there's a perception that right now you don't need a fuel station. I would disagree with that. Our analysis indicates that because of your growth, that we can sustain and do very good in this area because of not only the growth that you have now, but the future projected growth. And that's not with any competitor going away, but with the competitors that are currently in business. However, we still need, if we're focusing long-term on investment, we have to have the ability to compete on a level playing field with those who already have video gaming.
So just the last question. So you would not build this if you are not given a video gaming terminal? So when we talk about the investment in the community and all of the good things about the culture, were it not for a gaming license, for which, of course, we all know thirty-four cents per dollar is taxed, twenty-nine cents of that goes to the state of Illinois. Only five cents actually stays in the community, which studies indicate don't even cover the overhead associated with admin, additional policing, et cetera. You would not build this if you are not given the gaming license?
I would not say that in absolute terms at all. We would have to factor that in because revenue from video gaming goes into our overall factor on whether or not we believe this location could be profitable. What we would ask is, is it really fair for new development to be held back from a revenue source when others right across the interstate, three of which, that are less than a mile, have that opportunity for a revenue stream?
I understand what you're saying. And in fact, the prior council had capped video gambling terminals for that reason at fifty. And then it became sixty. And then it became sixty-one because of an economic development tool. And now it is sixty-two. So you see, my concern is looking out for this community as a whole and realizing the numbers, which are available very easily for anyone to look at and download. It's a significant non-value-added loss to those who are playing these games at the, then benefit of the state of Illinois, not so much Bloomington, and those who are the operators, many of whom are not really our local people here in the community. So I thank you for answering my questions, though. I appreciate that.
No, I understand. You know, I think value is relative to the person that's putting the twenty bucks in the machine. My grandma, she gets a thrill, and the fact that she got to get out of the house and put twenty bucks in a machine one afternoon and with the thought of winning, to her, there's a value to that.
I understand. In the state of Illinois, which, you know, is kind of selected out here as your pilot-
I live in Illinois, just so you know.
Well, Bloomington is sixth, number six in the state of Illinois in per capita gaming terminals. So just to put that in perspective, and the only communities above us, I believe, include towns like Peoria and Decatur.
Well, thank you. Councilwoman Ime?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I have two questions, and the second one might go back to, to city staff. The first question is, if, if you've had similar concerns in other communities, such as Waco, or I was trying to think of something somewhat comparable. Stillwater, Oklahoma doesn't quite have the population, but my school, and yeah, you, you get, get the drift, about the impact of a QuickTrip travel center near residential areas. Have you found that, that people, residents, neighborhoods, folks who may have complained about the potential problems, have you been able to mitigate that through signage or creating a green shield, if you will, between the facility and the community? Does, has that worked? What have you seen evolve over time when these establishments happen? And in a nutshell, what, what is that, you know, cohabitation between a place like a truck, a travel center and a residential neighborhood that very well will be expanding in the future to other residences?
Sure. So there's one, one of the examples I, I know, because I dealt with the store directly, was they were very strong about having an ordinance passed about no overnight parking. Unfortunately, some people think, well, no overnight parking, if I go there and I drive by at two o'clock in the morning, well, then the lot should be empty. But that's not the case because if a truck driver comes in at two AM and they leave at three AM, well, then that's not overnight. So we have a location there in the St. Louis area that is actually a little bit closer than the sixty acres that separates us and most of the residents. We have, we had a recent complaint. I got a call from the alderman. I discussed with the alderman. I went out, I sat in the neighborhood, I listened. When I, when we nailed it down, it was the other business that was near it. Their trucks were starting up at five and six in the morning. So there was this misconception that the noise was coming from us. When we actually drilled down, it was actually coming from, this, coming from a different business. What we find, though, is the highway noise is so prevalent along these corridors because that's where we're located. We're not five miles into, into the community. We're right off of the frontage, right off of an interstate highway. And so I did that very thing. That's part of what I do, is I go and I park, and I just sit there with my windows down, and it's, what do I hear? And when I'm, I'm sitting in that area, the prevalent noise is constant highway noise. So a lot of times, I'm not going to say one hundred, I'm not going to talk in absolutes, but the majority of the times, we are completely drowned out by the highway sound that's actually closer to the residential area than will be. We'll be separated by over sixty acres from most of the residents. One of our intentions, again, is to go on and, and put a crop in so we can, that will be, we will maintain a crop until that's developed. There is another sixty acres. If someone wants to build houses, give me a call. You know, if, if there's a need there, we are more than happy to hear it from any developers. This is one of the reasons why we wanted to go on and annex in the entire property so in the future, the development could happen more quickly and that these steps didn't have to be gone through. However, they will still have a process to rezone, and they will still come before you with site plans with Sony.
And the store, the anecdote you provided about the community where you heard from an alderman regarding a complaint and that it turned out to be another facility, was it because of the, the, the care that QuickTrip took to keep it from rising to that level?
Yes, we, we actually built up a berm in lieu of the extensive evergreen row that we put. A berm would not be prudent. So that's why we went on. You know, when we looked at it, I was, you know, I know that the request was for ten, but my response to our team was, we need to make it aesthetically pleasing, and we need to get it as much as we can without building on top of each other where they'll, where they'll die out. So that's why we put the entire row back there. We also have a fence. The fence is not necessarily for sound or noise absorption. The fence is not necessarily for sound or noise absorption. The fence is a trash catcher. So we have screening at the bottom of the fence and it's actually to help prevent any of that trash blowing over into the other area. I think the reason why I say that anecdote is we take these very seriously. We don't just blow it, you know, somebody's upset about that. We honestly look into the situations and see, okay, now that we're here, now that everybody understands what the change actually became, is there now something that we need to do further to help prevent or help offset some of these issues?
Thank you. So, so my second question reflects back on the, the chairman's comments during the planning hearing about the cost of maintaining the infrastructure to the city over time. And I appreciate some of the responses that we've received about that. But just for the, the record, I, I was hoping you could speak to that now that more research has been conducted in terms of, of the long-range cost or projected cost because nobody has a crystal ball.
We have some very preliminary numbers. They were based on kind of rules of thumb that we have from our, our public works. And it's sort of, it's a, it's a long way in how you get there. But over time, the average is about, we think, less than 23,000 a year. But that is based on numbers that overshot based on what we had available. QuickTrip may be able to add.
As far as the maintenance goes, that, that number is a challenge. What I can tell you is with the plans that we have right now, we're looking at putting in approximately 1.6 to 2.7 million dollars in infrastructure. Now, is that what it would take to maintain it? Absolutely not. One, you're getting brand-new everything that's completely up to specs and standards of today. I dot standards are very high on, on infrastructure when you put that in. The, all of the sewer lines, everything that we put in before it's dedicated to the city, it will all have to pass all of the city inspections that it's required to do so, to make sure it's up to the city standards. We also have our own standards, which a lot of times I cannot, I can't say with certainty now, but I will tell you a lot of times they're higher than even what we require because we understand for our own purposes, we don't want a tractor trailer or, or you coming into the store going, dang gummit. We want you to be able to come in with convenience, get your fuel, get your coffee and be on your way. And you're just happy as can be because you came in and got your coffee and you got on your way and you didn't have anything that held you up. So when we put in infrastructure, we put it in with the mindset of we want this to last. We don't want a road torn up that nobody's going to come because now the road's torn up. So we're very, very specific and very, we, we use the best standards that we can based under the circumstances, based on the soils, based on the engineering, based on city code, to put in this infrastructure, not just for, for a short time, but for a long-term investment that we're making.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ward.
Yeah, I have questions. Thank you for the presentation and thank you to the public for the comments. I just have a couple of questions about the expect, expected revenues from fuel taxes and sales tax.
What I can tell you is the numbers in the analysis that we do are highly proprietary. However, on average, a QuickTrip contributes over a million dollars per store in state and local taxes. This is a travel center. That average is based on just a, I hate to say it this way, a regular C-store. So that amount would be even greater seeing that this is a travel center.
A million dollars per?
Per location in state and local taxes.
What time period?
In, in a year.
In a year. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other lights.
Mayor, I have a few questions.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I always forget about the person who's virtual.
That's right. That's right. No problem.
Remember Craver? I know, I know. Go ahead.
Thank you. So thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of quick follow-ups. So, and this is probably be more for planning, but for that lot that's going to be 60 acres owned agriculture, there would need to be a separate public hearing to determine, to, to give approval to something else going in there. Is that correct?
Yeah, likely anything would need a subdivision. So it'd be an update to the preliminary plan because it just shows it as one giant blob, one parcel left over. And also final plat will come in for that with, again, more specifics. So you would need that. Rezoning would likely be required as well. There's not much you can do in Ag. So yes, there are many things that would bring that forward back to the council.
And then does the infrastructure that's getting put in assist in a housing development going in that particular lot that I just mentioned? Meaning that say a developer wouldn't have to put all the infrastructure in it would already put, be put in by what, what QuickTrip is doing?
We could vote, right? Go ahead.
So because of the unknown nature of where that development is going, if it were to go residential, whoever would develop that would need to continue through the road, the roads, J.C. Parkway and Wiley, through that development. Because we don't know how it's going to develop, we didn't show that on any of the, the plans. But whoever would develop that, QuickTrip would communicate at the time that we're, you know, selling it or in that process that they understand that infrastructure would have to be carried through.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other lights and there's nobody else virtually, so. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:34. And we are going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a regular agenda. And we have, I should say that we have items eight, A through D that are related to this particular development. And I know we've already had a number of questions already. But, you know, as we get to it, then we can start voting on, on each item. But just wanted to, to mention that so we can have discussion overall if need be. And then after that, we'll, we'll do the voting. So item eight, A is a consideration and action on a resolution approving an annexation agreement with QuickTrip Corporation for land located west of I-55, south of West Market Street in McLean County. A lower cost of 80 acres more or less as requested by the Economic and Community Development Department. So turning over to City Manager Gleason for some comments.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and to the community. Like the mayor was saying, under the regular agenda, items nine, A, B, C, and D will be called individually. But we felt that there was an opportunity to speak to this as staff under this first one. I will say this, while staff recommends the support and the approval of each of these four items related to this project, the one thing that I'll share more so for the community's sake, that even if the decision is to approve this and it's against, you know, what the subdivision wants, the integrity of the process has actually been very impressive. The elected officials' engagement in this, the staff engagement, the advocacy on the part of a subdivision, while not in the city, still was very much heard. The plan commission, the steps that they took on behalf of this project, it's something that has come together, I believe, very well. And the willingness on the part of QuickTrip in this development. Appreciate the extras, if you will, that were considered at the request of staff and the residents that were heard and also the elected officials, like I mentioned that before. Kimberly, what I'm going to do is each time this item is called by the mayor, if you have any additional comments that help shape each individual item, we're going to go directly to you.
So you want to start with the nine, A then? Which is a resolution?
Yeah, and just to clarify, so with the public hearing portion done, now there's no new evidence. So this, the resolution is what is before you now. So by voting on, positively on this resolution, you'll be agreeing with and adopting the, the annexation agreement.
Mr. Jergens?
Thanks, Mayor. And if there is a motion to approve the resolution approving the annexation agreement, staff is recommending one clarification, that that motion be to approve it as amended. The amended amendment would be in section nine under video gaming. There we, we say that the gaming license can be issued if, if a truck stop is developed. And since there are different definitions of truck stop, our recommendation is to add the language as defined in chapter seven, article 13 of the city code, including as either a regular truck stop or a large truck stop. So I would just offer that so that there's no confusion on what their obligations are and the intent of the parties.
Sounds good. Is there Councilmember Martin?
I don't know. Are we, are we having discussion?
Yeah, we can have discussion.
I, so I, I do, I know I brought that up this morning. I'm curious, the process of making an amendment like that, that is material to many people, without it being presented in our packet to the public 48 hours in advance of this meeting?
Sure, so the state statute on annexation agreements and our city code both specifically provide that the city council can make changes after the public hearing. So there is specific language allowing that in our code. For example, it says the city council may approve the agreement as written or with modifications or rejected, and the state statutory provisions are the same. So that, that is permissible.
Sounds good. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve this side of.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second the approval of this, of item nine, A.
May I make one more comment before we?
Sure.
I just want to say that I see a lot of positives for this development. And as a community, it does provide solid infrastructure and potentially will help the residential development on the west side of town. And it provides revenue through taxation, which we, we are always glad to get. However, there are a variety of concerns that have surfaced. I've heard environmental concerns, quality of life concerns, as well as how well we have assessed the end game financially in terms of maintenance, although we, I do appreciate the work that you've done to address that question. And I appreciate the time that staff has taken to address all of our concerns for, for a while. In the end, I will not be supporting this and voting no to represent some of the legitimate concerns that have been raised. I just wanted to provide that rationale. If it does pass, I will vote to continue as it would make sense to do so.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin, Bowlin, and then Crumpler?
I just want to say that, you know, I agree, there are many positives associated with this. I do believe for in the future, we should have a standard expectation of a cost benefit done with as much rigor as possible before looking at taking on things where during the planning commission, the chair who voted against this indicated no financial calculations have been done to determine the financial responsibilities the city is taking on. In this case, while we can all kind of use our experience to determine that perhaps that's a positive cost benefit relative to the infrastructure that is being provided as a starting point, that is something that should be standard work for any of the analysis. When in response, the response to the chairperson was, it's a good question because we do have aging infrastructure. And there was an acknowledgement that we are struggling to keep up with the infrastructure we have to care for today.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowlin?
Yeah, I appreciate the explanation. You answered many of the questions that I've been asking all along. I have to agree with the chairman of the planning commission and also Councilmember Martin about having more specific calculations or figures. I'm a, I'm a numbers person. I like to see return on investment. And the site plan is very difficult to, to see. It's very small and I'm assuming that there's going to be three lanes in, on each street. And we do the calculations of lane miles. So the city has 800 lane miles and we're going to be adding X amount just around this development. And we are struggling to keep up with the older infrastructure. And I would like to have known how much tax revenue, in a general sense, from gas would be coming into the community to address all those streets that we need to repair. And I know that 20 years down the line, those streets will need to be repaired. And they will be the responsibility of the city. So those kind of figures, I like to have in advance to address some of the concerns from the community. There is green infrastructure being put in, in the sense of the landscaping. There is our detention basins being put in to address the flooding. They will be maintained by the developer, which saves the city money instead of the city having to mow detention basins. So in that sense, I see that there is a, a good return on investment, but I would like to have more specific numbers moving forward. This has gone through a long process. A lot of heads have, a lot of brains have thought through the process, lots of discussion. And I will be voting in favor. I believe that the other 60 acres with a zoning buffer from the commercial to mid-range use to full, single-family residential can occur. And that will also add a better protection to Bloomington Heights. And any new development is required to put in detention or retention basins, which will help with any kind of runoff or flooding as, as we move forward. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Urban and Crumpler?
Go ahead, please. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So it, it appears that we're discussing all four of these items and that's what I'm, my comments are going to be directed to is all, all of these in regards to this. I'm going to be supporting.
Oh, thank you.
I apologize. Is that better? I am going to be supporting this, this agenda item, A, B, C, and D. However, what I'm about to say, I realize would be a separate conversation. And that is probably for a future meeting. But what I think we need to be talking about in the elephant in the room is that we need to discuss the people that have gaming licenses on the waiting list. We are missing, we are missing that piece of this bubble. So City Manager, I'm kind of going to look at you and say, you know, this is a great concern to me. And, you know, I, I know that we need to have that conversation. So is this something that I, I put out a, what are they, an initiative for or what do I?
I don't think, I don't think a council initiative would be required. This is sort of a standing conversation.
This is sort of a standing conversation at council. Can this hold for a committee of the whole in May? I think that'd be May sixteenth for a broader conversation.
I believe that would suffice my question, and that would allow me to pass and approve of all of this and get this place built and get it done. If you can do that for me, please, thank you.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation this evening. I really enjoyed hearing a bit more about the company. And also, thank you to the city staff. I know this has been a long-term, longitudinal project with lots of people involved, I think as Councilmember Bowlin mentioned. I plan to support this item. I think building this travel center will help the city generate revenue, tax revenue. It was set to lose. Every council meeting I sit in, someone is talking about the state of roads in Bloomington. You know, and I think the future of our roads depends on the motor fuel tax. And I suspect that this gas station will be used by people on their way to somewhere else and help fund our roads in ways that are much needed, as many people have pointed out. I also recognize that QuickTrip is, the company itself is paying for the annexation costs, street costs, traffic control changes, tap-on fees, infrastructure upgrades, as you've mentioned earlier in your presentation. Hundred percent of those things that could cost the city money. And to be fair, I understand that, you know, the long-term of road maintenance and infrastructure cannot be covered this time, but I think those things will be paid for with the tax revenue that is generated from this project. And so I thank you for coming here today, and I look forward to seeing this move forward. Thank you.
Okay, yes, sure. I know, Councilmember Cravill, do you have questions before I forget about you?
No, I do not, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ward?
You know I do have comments. I will be supporting this. That said, I share some of the concerns that the neighbors have raised with regard to this. And I also share, and I have shared for several months, concerns about the video gaming. I'm voting in favor of this because of the revenue that will be coming into the city from the taxes, the development of the west side, and the emphasis on that. And I'm reiterating that I'm supporting this, not because I'm in favor of further video gaming, but because we have a commitment that the revenues from the video gaming will be used in creative ways in the community. And I'm holding the city manager to that commitment, which is what got me to vote for this to begin with a few months ago. And so I'd like to call the question.
Some of the questions have been called. So we had a motion, right?
Could I ask a question about that?
About?
About the comment that we've already predetermined that we're gonna use this gaming revenue in creative ways that was a condition of the vote? I just wanna make sure I understand what agreement there may have already been there that perhaps I missed.
No agreement has been finalized, but the conversation on some of the revenue streams that the city has is something that will be brought before council, you know, in the future. Likely the retreat that's already set for late summer, and it's something for the entire council to discuss some of the possibilities with the revenue streams that we have.
I appreciate that. It did sound as if there has been some informal directional discussion in that regard that perhaps I'm not privy to. So I just wanna offer that up as a concern.
When you're ready, I just wanted to confirm with Councilmember Crumpler and Councilmember Urban that your motion on the table was as amended, like Corporation Council discussed.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good. All right. And this is where I vote, right?
And as you're voting, Mayor, you will actually vote on this measure as well. The approval of an annexation agreement by state statute requires a two-thirds vote. And so by the municipal code, the mayor does vote in those situations where a greater than a majority is holding office. And the two-thirds vote is of those holding office. So the vote required for passage of this is six.
Sounds good. If you wanna go ahead and vote? Councilmember Motley? Okay. Okay, sounds good. So the item passes. There is one day to announce, but I'm clear?
Councilmember Emig?
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is consideration and action on approving an ordinance approving the annexation of land located west of I-55 and south of West Market Street in McLean County, Illinois, consisting of eighty acres, more or less, to the city of Bloomington, and an ordinance providing for zoning map amendment for annex property to B-1, General Commercial District, and A Agricultural District zoning as requested by the Economic and Community Development Department. So Kimberly, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the vote to bring them into the city. This is the petition to annex. The way agreements work, there could be twenty years between your last vote and this vote. I'm not sure we even made it a minute. So just something to keep in mind, so this is what brings them in. It makes the agreement official, and then from there on, we'll pull from that.
Okay, sounds good. I know we've had quite a bit of conversation already on this. Does anybody have anything else that they'd like to add before we go to a motion?
I make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Emig, second by Councilmember Becker. And I think you can go ahead and vote. And I don't have to vote this time.
Unless there's a time, Mayor.
Okay. Can I just vote for fun? No, okay. Okay, the item passes. There are no days to announce. And we're gonna move on to agenda item C, consideration and action on an ordinance approving a preliminary plan for property located, we all know where it's located. So to annex it to the city of, well... Yeah, so as requested by the Economic and Community Development Department. So Kimberly, more time.
This is the preliminary plan. This is kind of the palette being created for subdivision. So this shows the intent, the individual lots, the three commercial lots, the two outlots that are about fifteen acres. It shows the placement of the roads, the adjustment of the intersections. It shows the larger piece that would be the ag. It basically outlines what the future subdivision will look like. In the future, not tonight, you will see future requests. The final plat comes before you as they start, as development occurs. So this is just the preliminary plan, no different than any other preliminary plan that you've seen come before you. It's been through the same public hearing process. Again, we're just all right in a row.
Okay. Any comments or a motion?
I will make a motion to approve, but I have a question.
Okay, motion to approve by Councilman, second by Councilmember Urban, and now to the question.
This is gonna sound silly. There's lots of roads, especially in the suburban expansion of the city, also known as sprawl, that go to nowhere. So I'm just curious where Wiley Drive might go? Because when I go to Wiley Drive from where I live, I take Rabbit Hill Road and, you know, through the back there. And there's also gonna be an extension for Bloomington Heights Road. So I'm just kinda, I'm confused as to what that's gonna look like. It's not, this has to do with the planning and the site plan. Do you know, I mean, you don't have to answer that tonight if you don't know, but I would like, I'm curious.
So I can at least get an answer. So it's in the agreement that it will come down. As far as where, it's unknown. And it's, so it depends on what comes in. So that's kind of on purpose. But you will see that there were additional roads added, like I said, intersections were straightened. Didn't make more sense for turning radius, signalization, adding in the other, the additional infrastructure, the multipurpose path, the sidewalks, and all of those pieces. But when that piece does punch through, you will see it again.
Well, I was just curious, I know it's gonna come before council, but I was just curious, will it hook up to Six Points Road or somehow merge with Rabbit Hill? Or I'm just curious, probably it's too far down the road.
Yeah, the idea is to go south, but again...
You don't know yet. That's fine.
If you take Wiley, after we're done with what we're putting in, if you were to take Wiley beside the QuickTrip, you would then have to make a left on a Keen Crossing, and it would circle around. So we won't be doing aprons to nowhere. But we did go on and decide to put in Keen Crossing now. So everything will be there for wherever Wiley's gonna go in J.C. Parkway, they'll be able to connect on.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. So I don't see any other lights, so we can move on to voting? Okay, the item passes. There are no days to announce. And now moving on to item nine D, consideration and action on an ordinance approving a site plan for a vehicle fueling station in the B-1 Commercial District for property located at West Market Street, as requested by the Economic and Community Development Department. Kimberly?
Thank you, Mayor. For this case, we're in a little bit of a time warp. Again, we went through twenty years really fast. Now, the legislative site review is for the QuickTrip location, that lot itself. And that's because being zone B-1, there's a requirement now with the latest code update that legislative site review is required. The part of the reason I say a little bit of a time warp, this has to be approved contingent on the final plats because technically, there's no lot that we're attaching it to, and it has to be final-platted. So why do you have it now? Originally, we tried to kind of streamline everything, but for a number of reasons, we decided to peel back on the streamlining. But we've already had this set up for the public hearing, so it's been through the public hearing process. So again, this enables a building permit. Can they go get one for this? Not yet. They have a lot more work to do. There's that final plat which entails the construction plans, the infrastructure. A whole lot of pieces are gonna come next. So it's a contingent approval.
On the final plat? Okay, awesome.
And just very quickly, no special motion needs to be made. It is specified in the ordinance that it does not take effect until after we get those final plats and you approve all of that. So you can approve this ordinance as is, and then the effectiveness will take place as Kimberly stated.
Okay, sounds good. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Urban?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Crumpler. Any discussion or vote? Looks like everybody's ready to vote, so let's go. Okay. Okay, the item passes. There are no days to announce. Thank you all very much.
I'd like to again echo John's words in thanking all of you, the staff, all of the time, the plan commission, that you all have spent in looking on this. I know that this has been a lot to consider, and we're very grateful. We're very excited about coming to Bloomington. And I also wanna thank all of the residents. Their feedback just helps us be better, and we wanna be a great addition to your community. So again, thank you all for your time and consideration.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And Mayor, we gave you twenty-five trees, so you should really be happy today.
Exactly, on Arbor Day. Okay, moving on to item nine E, consideration and action on an ordinance approving the development agreement by and between the city of Bloomington, Illinois, and Illinois and Toastman Group Incorporated, Egg Republic at 511 Chancellor Drive as requested by the Economic and Community Development Department. And I'm gonna turn it over to City Manager Gleason for introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Very quick comments. Great opportunity for the community. Successful restaurants and other communities, and through the efforts of Melissa Hahn, her team, and the business owners, we've got an agenda item before council tonight that we hope council supports. Melissa?
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. We're very excited to present to you this evening a development agreement for a new-to-the-city restaurant called Egg Republic that will be developed by the Toastman Group, too. The project will include the redevelopment of an existing building at 511 Chancellor Drive, which has been vacant since 2018. The developer is expected to invest approximately $792,000 into the property, including interior and exterior renovations. The project will result in the Egg Republic Restaurant, which will operate seven days a week from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And the developer anticipates that this project will create twenty-five new jobs, fifteen full-time and ten part-time positions. The developer has proven a financial gap for this project, and the incentives rebated to the developer will be generated by the project. The development agreement before you for consideration will rebate fifty percent of the municipal sales tax and food and beverage tax. The site, as I stated, is currently vacant and is not generating sales or food and beverage tax at this time. As structured, the proposed agreement will be fulfilled once the total reimbursement equals twenty percent of the total project cost, $158,500, or at the end of the five-year term on August 31st, 2027, whichever comes first. After fulfillment of the agreement, the city will receive a hundred percent of the municipal sales tax and food and beverage tax. This project aligns with the city's strategic and comprehensive plan goals, and the offer of incentives will ensure its financial viability for years to come. That's all I have, and at this time, I'll open it up for questions.
Okay. Questions? Councilmember Bowlin?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. You said the investment is somewhere around $170,000?
From the developer, it's $792,000.
$792,000. And we are rebating, you said, $158,000? And that's over five years?
Yes.
Mayor, I had a question whenever it's my turn.
Okay, I was just thinking about you, Councilmember Cravill.
Thank you, thank you. Melissa, you answered questions for me, and I appreciate that. Wanted to ask, has there been any interest showed in that property before Egg Republic? from 2018? That you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. So questions, you know, asked by the, you know, community, member of the community. Basically, you know, why, why give the incentives to this business versus another one? And your answer basically is anybody could apply for an incentive and it all depends on them showing that there's a financial gap in which the incentive would be needed to, to make the business viable, right?
Yeah, so that is one of the things that we would be looking at. We look at every project on a case-by-case basis, but we are definitely, I mean, anyone could apply for incentives.
And then the follow-up question, is this setting a bad precedent? And basically, you know, you've got somebody that has a successful business for 12 years in a, in a different city. They're going to be renovating, you mentioned the $700,000 for building that's been vacant since 2018. Add 25 jobs. And ultimately, if it stays undeveloped, we won't get any, any tax money. And, and our incentive exposure, I think, is limited to 158,000. Or the, I guess, the date of August 31st, 2027, right?
Yes, it's whichever comes first. So if, if they're doing well, the rebate could be paid off sooner.
Gotcha, okay. I would go ahead and, and move to approve item, I think, nine E. Nine E as presented.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Grayville. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Crumpler. Any other comments?
Just one comment. As we have learned from what we've got going on around the county where we're looking to standardize incentives so we can prevent conflict so that there's transparency and people understand the formulas that are used to make decisions that might otherwise appear subjective. I, I just think there's some positive learnings from what the EDC is doing in this regard that could help us avoid some of the challenges that are, you know, implied in my opinion in the questions from Councilmember Grayville.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other comments, I think we're ready to vote. Okay. The item passes. There are no names to announce. Now we're going to move to item nine F. With our star Public Works Director. So consideration and action to approve a contract with Donahue and Associates for system-wide portable water distribution improvements preliminary design in the amount of $1,497,400 as requested by the Public Works Department. City Manager Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and to the community. Bloomington is very fortunate that we have water as a municipal utility and it's a tremendous asset and resource for us. What Public Works Director, Kothi, is going to speak with us is the preliminary design for improvements that we're proposing. The contract is with Donahue and Associates. It's a $1.5 million investment in this preliminary design. But it's an investment, again, in a resource that many communities would just, you know, would kill to have, to be quite honest. Kevin, going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to give you a little background on the project and where we're at today. Next slide, please. So timeline here, back in January of 2020, we started with a, a study that was approved by council for Division and Enterprise Pump Station Planning. And then in July that year, the Water Infrastructure Master Plan was approved by council. And then in, in January of '21, we, we took a step back, we did a amendment to the study to look at location alternatives. And, and so that study then concluded the, the research and everything in, in July. And now we're coming before you with the next step after having looked at this closer as far as where, where should these pump stations be ideally? If we're going to make these, these big investments in our infrastructure, which is, is needed for safer, reliable drinking water. So, next slide, please. The inputs to what the study looked at, location-wise, this is a map that you all have seen before that shows by, by decade annexations to the city and, and the purple.
Just to, sorry to interrupt, but I, I'm not seeing anything and I don't know if that means on YouTube it's not showing either, just to mention that. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, no, you're, you're fine. We'll, we'll let our technical experts in the back figure that out. But the, the annexation map is one that we've shared before that just shows the growth of the city over, over the years. And the purple is the, the kind of the core of the city that goes back into the 1800s to, to basically 1950. And, and, you know, the city has grown, obviously, to the east, but also to the south and to the west. And you can kind of see how that growth has changed. And that was one of the things that we, you know, looked at. And then, next slide, please. Another component is where is our existing water consumption? So this is by meter location, the, the average annual water consumption for different locations. And the, the color and the size of the circle relates to how much water is being used at these locations. And so what's interesting about this graphic is that we can look at where, where's the water being used today? And if you did a central meridian, that would, center line would be roughly along Mercer, which at the south end of Mercer is, is roughly the Hamilton Tank. And at the north end of Mercer is roughly Fort Jesse Tanks and Pump Station. So it's just interesting, the newer infrastructure is about ideally centered on the city to be able to ride east and west. And of course, we know that the water from the lakes comes down Pipeline Road to the city. So, next slide, please. Another input to our study involves information from Bringing on Bloomington. That's our last comprehensive plan that was done in 2015 that looks to 2035 for growth. And so these are the areas around the, the edge of the city that, that comprehensive plan suggested would be developed next or should be developed next and, and what type of zoning those should be. Though, that influences then potentially the water consumption for those areas. And so that was also added to the model along with all those little different colored lines that you see up there with red and, and blues and different things. Those represent the water mains and the distribution system that are 12 inches or larger that, that, you know, the smaller lines provide water to individual homes and so forth. The larger lines are kind of along the arterial roads where the, a lot of the water is conveyed to those smaller lines. And then, next slide, please. This, this is the translation of those zonings, zoning areas, the development areas into water usage. And, and then that information was used in the modeling to figure out where, where's the ideal locations for the new infrastructure. Next slide, please. So the existing areas that are served by the city, the main one is the purple. That's the Hamilton Pressure Zone. And, and that's, you know, Fort Jesse feeds it and so does Division Street. To, to the west is the Enterprise Zone, that's the green. And that's fed from the Enterprise Pump Station, which is also located at Division Street. And then at the south end, we have the South Main Pressure Zone, which has a, a smaller pump down at the South Main Street that feeds that Pressure Zone. We also have some little ancillary pressure zones to the west by Heartland Hills and then to the north for Hudson. But you'll notice that there's a, a blue line that kind of runs on diagonal through the town of Normal. And that, that is the transmission mains that go, that, you know, the Pipeline Road mains come down to the city and then find their way along mainly Sugar Creek to get to Division Street to, to provide the water for the pump stations there at Division. And so just a brief history there, you know, the original Water Works goes back into the 1870s. There was wells there at Division Street and a standpipe that provided water to downtown Bloomington. In, in 1906, at Division Street, a 10-million gallon reservoir was added. And then in 1929, transmission mains were added to convey water from the new Lake Bloomington and the new water treatment plant. And, and then at some point, then the, the well at Division Street was abandoned in favor of the water that was coming from the lake. In 1954, they, we added a 5-million gallon reservoir in addition. The 10-million gallon reservoir was actually covered at that time. And then the Division Street Pump Station and the second Transmission Main was added in, in the 50s. And then in '88, when Diamond Star came to Bloomington, the Enterprise Pump Station was added to provide water to that west side. And then in the 90s, the, the South Main Zone Pump Station. And then '94, some improvements to Division Street Pump Station. So a long history of a lot of stuff at Division Street. And then, you know, the question in the study, next slide, please, was, you know, where would be the ideal location to provide water that meets current demands, but also looks to the future? And you saw those inputs earlier on that we used into the, the water model. And the water model i- is similar to like the hydraulic model for like the stormwater that we're doing. This is a, a different nature. It's that, it's all pressure pipes, right? Because water we pump and it can go serve different areas. But the, the important things are the, the ability to, to pump and deliver water in a timely manner because water quality, as water ages, its quality decreases. And so we want to get it there kind of in the, in the quickest time, shortest pass possible type of thing. So it gets to our, from our sources to our consumers where the demand is as quickly as we can. So, next slide, please. The considerate, oh, that one, yep. It, it's a, it, it looks similar, but it's different. So what, what we see in the study is, you know, the, the blue box with the dash lines is the ideal place for another, the Division Street Pump Station to be relocated somewhere in that area along with another elevated tank. And also the yellow zone go away at the south end and become incorporated with the Enterprise Zone and, and add an elevated tank down at Morrison and Hamilton Road that was contemplated many years ago as, as the Enterprise Zone came into being. And, and that's right near Prairie Vista Golf Course, land that the city already owns. And, and so all these together make for better improvements to our water system that benefits the entire community, not just the east side or the west side, but the entire community by improved pressures and, and water quality. And what it ends up meaning is that as, as we look to relocate the Division Street Pump Station to the east side to better serve that east side, it also means that we don't have to do some rehab to some other infrastructure. Like for instance, the old Transmission Mains that we talk about go through Normal, very difficult area to rehab. They need rehab. But if we relocate the infrastructure now, we don't need to rehab those. We'd also don't need to rehab the 10-million gallon tank or the 5-million gallon tank, which by today's standards can't be built where they're built because they're actually in floodplains. So there's a lot of costs that, you know, kind of, that we're planning on having to do for rehab that we, we won't have to do in that sense. And it puts us in a better position for serving our customers today and into the future. So, next slide, please. So in summary, the proposed improvements are the most cost-effective and sustainable of the alternatives considered. The elevated storage and central location will reduce pumping requirements and associated maintenance. The higher elevation will reduce energy usage and the water modeling showed improvement in quality of water service throughout the system. Next slide, please. So the next step is to approve a contract with Donahue and Associates to do preliminary design for all these improvements. Final design for the Enterprise Zone Elevated Tank. Help us with financial planning, land acquisition and siting requirements for that east side, northeast side pump station and for an amount not to exceed 1.497,4 million dollars. And it's a lot of money, but these are a lot of improvements, millions of dollars of improvements that will be done. Not, not just in a year or two, but over many years, probably, you know, more than a decade. And we need to plan that out with, obviously, we'll be working on a rate study, but we also, financial planning, we'll probably be looking at, you know, some sort of financing for some of this. But, you know, this all has to be planned out incrementally where we can deliver these different projects, all not in the same year, but over time. And, you know, when we're done, we'll have, you know, a much improved water system that not only serves our customers today, but also into the future. So, next slide. Thank you, and I'll open it back to questions.
I'll turn it over to City Manager Gleason.
I just have a, a very brief comment, just piggybacking off of the Public Works Director. You know, I, and I don't intend for the slide to go backwards to the benefits, but just anybody in the community, you know, please take a look at this. This is something that staff under the direction of the Public Works Director has caught. And again, this is a high-dollar investment. It's going to take several years, you know, over the course of 10-plus years to complete this. But the disruption to the north, our neighbors to the north, by moving and shifting this to the eastern side of the community, using the height elevation to save us on energy costs, this is huge for the entire system. And it's one that will eliminate, will lessen the disruption that we would have had if we would have continued along the main, is how I'll describe it. If we would have followed the main that runs through Normal. So, very nice job. Open it up, Mayor, please, to questions.
Questions, comments or motion?
I will make a motion to approve, but I have a quick question.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, second by Councilmember Becker.
Since this is such a long-term plan and now we just discussed the investment of the gas station on the west side and Rivian's over on that part of town. Does, do these designs and plans take into account that possibly the west and southwest area where that Enterprise Zone is will potentially develop to the point where the northeast is?
Yeah, no, that's all taken into account. And that's why I wanted to show some of those, you know, background maps from, you know, the comprehensive plan. Because this really goes hand-in-hand with, you know, as, as the comprehensive plan is developed, you know, one of the driving factors in development in central Illinois has to do with sewer. Where, what properties can be served by sewer? And so a lot of the comprehensive plan looked at that aspect to say, these are areas that are adjacent to the city that can be served by sewer either now or, or easily into the future. And so that's, that's looking into those areas and, and that's what the, you know, water planning, the, the model that was built, use that as input and also factors in roads and, and all that type of thing.
And Mayor, I had a few questions, if I could.
Yes, I was just thinking about you.
Thank you, thank you. And taking off of Donna's question, do you think putting this station up on the northeast side will encourage further sprawl to the east for the city?
Whether, whether it encourages sprawl or not, I mean, that, that's, you know, it, it provides service, you know, to those areas, like I say, that was shown in the comprehensive plan. You know, I, it, it's necessary, I think, today from the standpoint where our current demands are from our customers. I don't, I can't say that necessarily encourages sprawl or discourages sprawl. It makes, it makes some, you know, expansion possible, both to the east and to the west and to the south, so.
Thank you. And then, so I thought that this was going to be done kind of in tandem with the water rate study. Are we expecting the results of that study in the near future?
There, there is the need to move the water rate study forward. It, it is under contract. But, you know, the kind of, some of the next steps is, is also, you know, looking at the infrastructure that the master plan had a lot of infrastructure. master plan had a lot of infrastructure in it. It did not necessarily have every component that we now have from this distribution modeling study, but now that we have that, we can, we can plan that out and it all needs to go hand in hand, you're right. And the next, one of the next steps is also putting together the the committee to meet. And, you know, some of that got put on hold a little bit because of COVID, but
Right.
It'll be a public outreach committee, too.
Okay, and I'll just take this opportunity to to mention this. I I think I've mentioned it before. You know, we know water is a finite resource and we should encourage less use or to be conservative with use. You know, we stopped water shut offs during most of the pandemic. You know, if somebody can't pay their water bill, basically, that makes someone homeless. Right now, basically, the more you use of water, the less you pay per rate. And I would like to see that reversed to maybe help prevent people from losing water service and and basically losing, you know, access to living in in their home. So that's just a comment. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Crebel. It doesn't look like we have any other questions or comments, so if you want to go ahead and vote. Okay, the item passes. There are no nays to announce. Thank you, Kevin. Last item on the agenda, everybody should be clapping, is a consideration and action on a ordinance approving the development agreement by and between the city of Bloomington, McLean County, and One Oh Two Southeast LLC for the redevelopment of C two East and authorizing the city manager to execute a tax rebate agreement between Bloomington Public School, District Eighty-seven, the city, and One Oh Two Southeast LLC as requested by the Administration Department, City Manager Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and to the community. I know it's been a long night, but you talk about capping off a great consent and regular agenda. This is it. This is the project that this community has been asking for for quite some time. We have prominent developers that are very suc- successful here in our community and other communities that we think we're going to get this building into the right hands through this incentive that Deputy City Manager is going to discuss. While we're talking about C two East Building, one that's fallen into a state of disrepair for well over a decade. If you're northbound on Business Fifty-One, it's one that you see as soon as you come around the corner from the New Law and Justice Center. And it's an exciting project. I'm going to also comment that what is before council tonight is contingent on act, future action by District Eighty-seven. They're they're they are a component in all of this. Superintendent Barry Riley, and I think he's watching from home, has been a complete pleasure to work with on this project, along with the leadership on the the board. Deputy City Manager, you know, truly tremendous credit goes to you in getting this to this point to where council has all the information hopefully that they need. And we can finish up the night with another great project for the community. Billy.
Thank you, Tim. Couple of things I'd like to mention, and really, we, as as the manager talked about, this property has sat vacant for for years, obviously, before I arrived. And it's been a series of starts and stops in terms of trying to get something developed there. For the last several years, we haven't had a lot of folks come forward asking to develop this property. And so when we had a local developer to come forward to to start having those conversations with us, it was exciting. We, that developer and that team is 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 will be required and is is looking to invest at least four million dollars in this property. That's not a small number in terms of an investment in in a residential project. As the manager said, it's a project property that's decaying and actually costing us money these days, frankly, in terms of enforcement action and also staff time having to monitor the property. The development will be, will bring twelve living units to the community. As Patrick Hoben talked about earlier, there is a significant need for housing in this area, area in our community. The plan is for eight traditional apartments. I believe they're two bedroom apartments and then four short term rentals. And then again, on the first floor, five thousand ish square feet of commercial space. Our obligation would be to abate the city's incremental property tax amount, so we will continue to collect what we're currently collecting. But the incremental growth that comes as a result of this project that would not come or not for this project would be abated over a a term of fifteen years. These, as the manager talked about, there would be also an agreement considered by the school district for them to abate their incremental property taxes for a period of twelve years. The other thing that we have would agree to do is to share with the developer in the cost of educating students in the unlikely event, and we believe it's an unlikely event, that more than one student would live, would reside in this, in the building that goes to District Eighty-seven. And so we would agree to to cover a portion of the cost of that student, up to a a certain amount, obviously. Again, w- we're excited about the possibility of the project. It's it's been a property that has sat vacant, as I said, for some time now. Bringing housing to the community is important. As Patrick talked about as well, infill development, it's it's, you know, new construction is important, but so too is developing, redeveloping what we have. And so again, the developer is here. Andy Kaufman, if you can raise your hand, I appreciate it. Again, local developer, and again, we're excited about the possibility. Be glad to answer any questions if I can.
Okay, council, questions, comments, or a motion?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Um, thanks, you know, for this, Billy. I I know that this building has been empty for a long time and there've been lots of conversations about it. And I support support this. My only question, as I was looking over the the materials for this evening, is there a commitment from the local developer to to work with local unions to hire locally? I don't see that in the project agreement. And, you know, I think you and I would agree that, you know, working with local unions is an opportunity to provide jobs, you know, to families in this community and for them to, you know, to put money back into the local economy.
I I can't speak for the developer, but what I do know is that he plans to bid the project locally and and obviously, local companies and 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 local labor organizations are invited to bid on the project. I do know that a project of this size and scope, you will have local labor on it. We do not, as you know, have a local labor requirement by from the city. But again, I do know that this developer, and we've had conversations about this, intends to bid this across the community. And I I I can't speak for local labor, but I my assumption is that organizations utilizing local labor would be bidding on the project. Thank you.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yeah, I understand that this is going to be a mixed use with the office space on the bottom. Who would be responsible? Would the developer be responsible for bringing in?
That that is correct. That is correct. And again, there are zoning rules and ordinance that government govern what can happen there, but it's a it's a private property. So the developer would be responsible for recruiting.
Okay, so there could be maybe two companies use that space or just one or?
I would, I would say that that's a possibility. Could be more than one. But again, I I I don't want to speak for the developer, but they would be responsible for that recruitment.
Don't take offense by this. Is there a clawback if all the criteria are not met?
Well, that's that's actually, the the developer, as part of this process, has to prove that they're making the dollar amount investment that that they have committed to. They also have to develop the property in the way that we have said that I that I described. And in the event that those things don't happen, and again, there's some flexibility in terms of the number of the types of apartment, et cetera, et cetera. But if those things don't happen, the developer could be seen in default and obviously, we wouldn't have started paying out until the project is done.
Part of that is for the public.
I I I figured.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Becker?
So I just want to share a couple of comments that I've gotten from other other business folks in the community on this one. And the the comments are that this helps them to have confidence that we are committed to some infill, some downtown. They're seeing other things, Quick Trip, that's showing confidence on the outside, you know, the west side. They're seeing that we're not putting all our eggs in one basket and they're excited. So I want people to realize that that each of these individual decisions is a part of a bigger plan and a bigger vision. And they're building confidence in other investors that want to put more money into this town. I've had at least five conversations in the last two weeks with different investors that say, this is good. Support this. This will encourage me to put my money back into Bloomington. So I obviously support this one.
Thank you, Councilmember Becker. Well said. That's all we're trying to do here, encourage more people to invest in Bloomington. Councilmember Crebel, I was just thinking about you.
Thank you, Mayor. No questions or comments?
Okay, awesome. Any other comments?
Can I make a motion to approve?
Sure. I think we had already, didn't we have already? Okay, all right. So motion to approve, okay. And then second by Councilmember Marty. Okay, awesome. Let's vote. I'm going to see a couple of people on my screen here, Councilmember Bowlin, Councilmember Ene.
While, I'm sorry, while you're voting, I I I would be remiss if I didn't say this was a truly a team effort if this passes, obviously. Scott on my right was integral in in making this happen as well. So just wanted to say.
Okay.
My vote was a yes. My finger was hit the wrong.
Hey, you're going to scare the developer.
Only Julie, that's what happened.
So what what do we do? So, okay.
Is it?
Yeah, item passes. No nays to announce.
Yeah. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you, Leslie.
Very nice. All right, so our next item on the agenda. By the way, just want to say a quick thank you to to the staff, you know, for great work. This was a really busy agenda, items that took a a really, really long time. And these guys make it look easy, you know, and they're not even showing any signs of stress. So I I think we really need to applaud the staff, but also applaud the council for everybody just kind of being in lockstep and and moving forward on all these items. These are very important for the community. So, awesome. With that said, I turn it over to City Manager Gleason for our Finance Director's report. He's probably smiling a lot because of all these great projects.
It's that time of the month where the Finance Director has his monthly Finance Director's Report. I think Scott's requested that we dim the lights and you want to spotlight.
That's right. Some music.
No, I'm going to turn this over to Scott for the March financials. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor, Council, I'll keep it brief tonight. While we're through March, eleven months, one month to go, there's still a lot of activity to still be recognized for the city. Our sales taxes are basically three months in arrears. A lot of the items that were approved on the agenda this evening are not incorporated into the projections right now, an example being the fire truck, you know, for for nine hundred thousand dollars. So we do not put items like that into projection until approved. So I wanted to spend a little bit more time talking about timing and process. And, you know, we'll start zeroing in on those numbers in the in the coming months. So again, this month, no material changes from from prior. Revenues are up. We have mounting concerns, obviously, about rising costs. I wanted to mention again, like I did last month, I wanted to acknowledge that while our revenues are up, the city's revenues are up. I do acknowledge, you know, that that could be a burden for some of the taxpayers as inflation goes up and sales tax revenues go up. You know, positive revenues for us, but it is challenging for our community. So my, I guess my message is, you know, that we will attempt in any way possible to use those dollars wisely. And hopefully, that's evident evidenced by amendments that we've done for for cash for equipment. The decision to put more than half down on the on the O'Neill Park and Pool project of eight point two million, trying to save some of the the interest costs going forward for the community. So using those dollars wisely is is really, you know, a core mission of ours. Next slide, please. So so just briefly here, to look at the year-to-date column, I want to want to highlight, you know, you can see that home rule sales tax and state sales tax, we've only gotten nine months recognized wh- while we're through March. So not to bore everyone, but it is worth understanding that when a sale occurs in a given month, the retailer remits to the state the following month, the state compiles that information the month after that. And then the month month after that, they actually remit it back to the municipality. So there's a three month delay on sales taxes. So we don't have visibility on sales taxes, which is, as you can see, the highest components of our of our revenue structure for three months. Most of our other business, local business taxes are really just kind of like one month in arrears. But so we we do have that that large gap on home rule and state. I've highlighted a few items here. I'll go through briefly. Home rule sales tax, four point four million dollars a head year-to-date. We're averaging between four and five hundred thousand dollars each month over budget. So, you know, we're anticipating, you know, with three months left, that's one point five million. So doing the math there, you know, six million dollars roughly over. You can see that we took it down one point four million dollars from the prior year. So to repeat some of the messaging from from the budget, the new revenues related to that 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 increase are really related to the online component, that sales tax is being collected from online purchases now. It's really had a material impact for us. And then obviously, the cannabis dispensaries is contributing to that as well. Rolling down the exhibit, local motor fuel tax, year-to-date, we're slightly under. There's some fluctuation there. We've been kind of running just a little above a budget year-long. The home rule sales tax, you know, if that comes in roughly six million dollars, but if you take out the one point four that we took it down for prior year, let's let's just use five million dollars, four to five million dollars over budget, that's going to offset some of that local motor fuel tax decrease, but not the seven hundred thousand dollars in the far right column that we took it down from prior year. So as a home rule goes up, ten percent of that is allocated to the asphalt and concrete fund, so that helps offset any local motor fuel tax. It doesn't rebound related to remote workforce. But, you know, that 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 I think is changing a bit, but that remains to be seen. Food and beverage tax, I wanted to highlight, really strong. I mean, I love the number, nine hundred thousand dollars over year-to-date. We took the budget down five seventy-five. Food and beverage, we're averaging about seventy-five to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over budget each month. So that can fluctuate depending on holidays, et cetera. And then hotel motel tax. Far right column, you can see we took it down by seven hundred fifty thousand, thinking that was going to be a residual impact from COVID. Not realizing, you know, the the dramatic drive that Rivian was going to be pushing and the impact on the on the local economy related to that. So we're a million dollars over budget year-to-date in hotel motel. We understand that that is not going to be, you know, an ongoing variance, but very glad to see that at this point in time. Again, just want to repeat the message from the prefer screen. You know, it's our job and finance and city administration and as managers to utilize those dollars equitably for the for the community. Next slide, please. So just highlighting our funds, we we still have that four point eight million dollars. You'll see on the next screen that the we're uncertain that that's going to be allocated in twenty twenty-two, so we'll we'll show an adjustment in just a moment. Taxes, nineteen point eight million dollars, that's the projection over for the budget for the year. The prior screening showed us that we're about fourteen five, fourteen six over already. That does not include all are all taxes. That's a limited list on that prior exhibit. So we're trending favorably there, as I mentioned. Next slide, please. So again, not to be a broken record, but many of these categories are going to change because of some of the items that were approved tonight, somewhere for twenty-three, but some, there were some significant budget amendments for twenty twenty-two, specifically that fire truck due to that six hundred day lead time that we're we're having to address. 600-day lead time that we're having to address for delivery. So not going to roll through these numbers, but I just want to reference the other expenditures. Last month, we had a placeholder in there showing the use of ARPA funds. Since we're in April now, it's unlikely we'll have those encumbered before year-end. So in the highlighted section at the bottom, I'm just kind of showing that our reserves could end up being higher, like very much higher than what we've been showing, but showing that those, that $4.8 million in American Rescue Plan Act dollars are pending authorization. So to be strategically utilized, decided by, by you, council, as brought forward by the city manager at a future date. So we're kind of like showing to the placeholder just a little differently now that those will be restricted. So we're still kind of in that $34, $35 million reserve projection for the end of 2022. Next slide, please. Want to highlight, like we did last month, solid waste, you know, just this gives an example of the timing of the expense recognition. Also shows, you know, the fund has had kind of a reversal of fortunes, but as was discussed during one of the budget meetings, there's a very significant equipment, infrastructure, capital requirement for that fund, that some of that equipment has been delayed. But this does show, you can see the year-to-date $162,000 gain for the year at this point in time. And a lot of that is related to recycling, the turn of that, that we're, we're making revenue on that, and the, and the brush burner has lowered expenses dramatically. But my understanding, the recycling market is already changing, it's a very volatile thing. So it's one of those, one of those line items where you just, you just, you don't know, you can't depend on it. The other line I wanted to highlight is year-to-date actual, way over bottom right for the arena, $1.2 million in revenue, reflecting a lot of the IHSA activity for the cheer, dance, wrestling competitions, ice rentals, Morndale concert, casting crowns. So we're seeing some revenue kicking into the, to the arena at this point. And next slide is where we have this information located on the website. I mistakenly sent the February report to IT this afternoon. So if someone looked this afternoon, they would have seen February, but March should be out there now. Next slide, please. That's just the explanations. Next slide, please. I got to put these in a different order next month. I thought there was a question there. Take any questions or comments.
Any questions for, Scott? Councilmember Bowlin?
I always have questions. I remember when COVID first hit, and you dropped the budget down a lot. And then now, over the past two years, you've talked about, we are above budget. I'm not trying to put a cloud over this, because I think it's good news, but do you see, do you see where I'm going with this? How much, how much is real gain or gain over above what you've cut in 2020?
Right. So 2021, we adopted the budget. We, we came up with $5 million of savings, kind of like as an offset. And then 2022, we did lower many of the revenue categories. And that's why in that, that major tax revenue exhibit out the far right, we want to show what we dropped, the budget for '22 down from '21. So, you know, for example, to keep in context that, you know, the local motor fuel tax, I mean, we're a little under now, but we've been kind of tracking a little above budget for '22, but we took the budget down $700,000 from '21. So, you know, that was added to the exhibit, Councilmember Becker's request, I believe, to highlight the exact point that you're making is that positive variances we're showing right now need to be kept in, for '22, need to be kept in context with what we took it down from, from '21.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Crevel?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Oh, I thought you left. Okay, sounds good. Well, seeing no other questions, then thank you, Scott, as always. We're going to move on to City Manager discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have two slides, very brief comments. Trades and Labor Fest 2022 is this Saturday, 10:00 AM until 1:00 PM. It's at the Museum Square. We might have additional comments on that here in a minute or two. Next slide, please. Downtown Farmer's Market. This is the first one that is actually outdoors for the year, and that's not this Saturday, but next, May 7th, 7:30 to 12 o'clock, hopefully, I know it's well-attended by vendors, and the community always looks forward to this. And we're definitely in a different spot this year than where we have been the past couple. I guess the additional comments, just kind of very quickly talk about tonight's agenda. Again, there were several items on the consent agenda, on the regular agenda, and this is one for council to honestly take, you know, this one for the record books, where this council can take two or three victory laps for the items that were approved. Staff, all my departments were very much a part of this agenda. All of them had a presence and a piece. The Deputy City Manager talks about Corporation Council, Jeff Jurgens, you know, he, he and his team have a part in every single thing that makes it to the agenda, and definitely deserves that recognition. So I'm very proud of this team. We're going to have plenty to be talking about publicly, small doses. Catherine Murphy, when she gets back, is going to push press releases and social media releases, because we've got a lot to tell the community. And, you know, anybody that's watching Bloomington, I can say this, more to come. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, City Manager Gleason, and I would echo those comments. And again, thank you to staff for all your hard work. It hasn't gone unnoticed. Under Mayor's discussion, the only thing that I wanted to make note of is that we have received applications for Ward 1 applicants. And at this point, we have about, we have seven applicants, and I'm going to conduct interviews with them within the next week or so, pending, depending on schedules, you know, how schedules align. Certainly, you know, there's been a press release, so everyone should know who the applicants are, and I certainly welcome feedback from council members and any members of, of the community about the applicants. Moving on to council member discussion, are there any comments? Okay, Councilmember Bowlin and Councilmember Crumple?
Yeah, I just, I just want to announce that this is the 100th anniversary of the American Society of Clinical Pathologists, which I am a member, and they are celebrating Lab Week for medical professionals who, this is an exaggeration, are stuck in the lab, in the basement, without any recognition, doing, performing tests in order to help the physician with his diagnosis and treatment. So I didn't know if you knew that.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowlin.
Councilmember Crumple? Thank you, Mayor. Yes, just two quick things. I attended the POTS Award Luncheon last week, and then yesterday I was at the Hindu temple. You know, the POTS Luncheon gave me the opportunity to learn so much about what Deb, Deb and her volunteer staff do. Keeping plastics out of landfills is so important. And at the Hindu temple, I was so impressed with the generosity of my hosts and all the things that I learned about Hindu culture and religion. So it was a great time in both places.
Awesome. It was great. I was there, too. I should have mentioned that yet. Fantastic, fantastic time. Councilmember Urban?
Yes, thank you. So I just want to publicly acknowledge that there are some happy and some very unhappy people in regards to a recent pub crawl that hit our downtown area. The first initial count was 250 people, then it was 500 people. I saw a post that said, no, I've seen 800, and there were exaggerations that there were 1,000 people involved in this pub crawl, which, I mean, I, I wasn't there, I didn't see those people. So we want to acknowledge that we are hearing those voices, whether they're happy or unhappy with, with that situation, and that, you know, we're going to take what they're saying to us very seriously and, and look into it and, and make sure that we investigate what happened and what we can do better in the future. So I don't want them to feel like they're out there being ignored because they're not being ignored. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Becker?
I'm going to claim ignorance here and ask the chief to help me, but you did recently do some promotions for the, I want to say, community policing component. Can you tell me what the name of that is again?
Community Engagement Unit?
Thank you. I, I just could not remember that. And I just want to say that that's, you know, in, in the discussions we've had around violence and that, in here, I think that's a great step, and I really appreciate the work you're doing.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other lights. Councilmember Crevel?
Nothing for me.
Okay, I almost forgot you. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I will.
Okay, second. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Have a good evening, everybody, or rest of your evening, whatever's left of it.